To order roll call please.
Brian Gazy.
Present.
Kody Gabelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahan, absent, and I am present.
Lord Grable, Rice, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, Pat, do you have a virtue card?
I do have a virtue card. Excellence. Excellence is doing your best, giving careful attention to every task and every relationship. Excellent is effort guided by noble purpose. It is a desire for perfection. The perfection of seed comes in the fruit. When you practice excellence, you bring your gifts to fruition. Excellence is the key to success. You are practicing excellence when you give your best to whatever you do. Give your best to relationships, set noble and realistic goals. Remember to plan and practice. Don't try to do everything. Develop your special gifts. Affirmation. I give my best to the work I do. I give my best to others. I dare to set noble goals. I choose excellence in all things. And with the deer season coming up, I would just like to add that everyone have an excellent season and practice excellence.
There we go.
There we go. Excellent.
Okay, Board of Education guidelines, due to guidelines with an open mind. We will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We hope toward building a trusting environment for both students and staff to reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. And at this time, I would like any public comments? I want this going twice. CWSA update, CWSA update. Mrs. Boatall.
I just have a really quick one this time. We just met yesterday for our monthly meeting. We had a really good turnout for our showcase on the ninth, I believe it was.
Fantastic.
Very good parent attendance. So that was really a great thing for us too. So then, one other thing they're doing is they're going to be going to, on a field trip next month, and I forgot my notes. So I don't remember the name of it, but it's a planetarium in, I want to say Manasha area. And it's like a natural science museum and the planetarium and all that kind of stuff. So that's one fun thing that they're going to be doing. Still working on some more projects. Next showcase is, I believe we said in January or February, January maybe? I don't have my notes, I don't remember. Otherwise, we just had a really quick meeting Tuesday or yesterday. So we just want to say thank you to the board for your support for us. That we always want to say thank you for that support. And we're very anxious for the next month meeting for the referendum issues. So we've been talking about that a little bit more and just kind of hopefully staying on top of that. So we're interested to see what's going to happen. Any questions?
That was quite quick. Pat, go ahead.
They had a quick meeting, it was nice.
Hey, you have a question?
No.
I, so I'm just curious, you had, last time you were together, or last time you showed up, you had talked about looking for more parents and people, are you getting people stepping up?
No. Uh, no. So we are still looking for that. We are in need, well, we're actually, we're, will be, we will be in need of parents. But we're also in need of, um, like a city representative, because that's what I am. I'm not a parent anymore. I don't have a child.
So community member at large.
Community member, yes, thank you. So, um, my, my seat is a community member. We will have a parent that is deciding to not continue after her son goes through and is graduating eighth grade at the end of this year. So we'll actually have two spots open, a community member and a parent. So, um, community member can be anybody that's interested in it. So it's a great, it's a great program. It's great to be involved, highly involved in the educational system, which not a lot of people get to do unless you're a teacher. You know, it's just a really good way to be as involved with your child's education as you can.
Good.
So, yeah, so we need that too. So if anybody knows of any city, community people that would be willing to join, consent them our way.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Amy, very much. Um, at this time, we would like to talk about overarching results. And I will turn it over to Mr. Grill.
Yes, yes. So with the overarching result of instructional programs, I wanted to introduce you to these lovely ladies here. So we have Sarah from ODC.
Hello.
We have Ellen from ODC.
Hi there.
And then we have Olivia, our high school ID teacher. So as we're looking at different instructional programs for students, one of the ways we're looking to do that is partnering with some of our compute, community programs. So one thing we're looking at, one of the indicators we look at for our students with disabilities is called Indicator 14, which looks at how do our students do after they graduate? Are they going to two-year colleges? Are they going to universities? Are they going into the workforce and being successful? And one of the things in talking with Olivia and I in previous, and then Sarah as well, we said, you know, some of those soft skills of how do I interview for a job? How do I, you know, maintain a job, talk to a boss, balance a checkbook? Some of those skills, some of our students with disabilities need additional instruction in that area. So what we looked at was creating a collaboration with ODC and the Nacusa High School to provide this opportunity for our students. So there, I'm going to let them talk a little bit about what that class would look like. And also, there's a additional initiative that the state has put out. The law that Sarah will be talking about is WIOA, and she'll explain what that is, that has also been a support in creating this collaboration. So with that, I'll turn it over to these lovely ladies.
Okay, um, I'll start a little bit. Like I said, Brian kind of asked to talk a little bit about the history of why this is kind of occurring more. And again, the changes that ODC had to go through and why we had to go through those changes. As Brian mentioned, in 2014, there was a federal law called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA. And actually, it really didn't even start being implemented on 2016. And I'm not going to bore you with the details of the whole law, but there were two significant parts to it that really forced us at ODC to look at how we were providing service and who we were providing service to. And those two parts, the first part basically said, anyone under the age of 25 could no longer enter into training programs in which they would be paid less than minimum wage. So that meant no one was going to be coming into our facilities anymore, under that age. And basically what it said, it even went further and said, individuals need to go to the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation first. All training needs to take place in the community. So that was again, where we're like, okay, we need to change our focus here. Because probably what used to happen is Olivia might call the senior year of, you know, when a student's in his senior year, his or her senior year, and say, hey, they're going to work at ODC. Can we have them spend the last year of, of their schooling, earn that at ODC? They'd come, they'd work, they'd graduate, and they'd stay at ODC forever. With the new law, that wasn't an option, not an option at all. Okay? This, the other part of the law that really changed what we were doing is that it said, they, that we as agencies were encouraged to partner with school districts, to partner with the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, to start working with students as early as the age of 14. However that be, whatever that look like, to prepare them for life after graduation. And so what we found is the sooner we could partner with schools, either that go through instructing or on the job training, the more successful these students would be. So we started looking at, okay, what kind of curriculum can we provide? What type of job opportunities can we provide? What can we do and what can we partner with schools to better prepare them for the world of work? And so that's kind of where these partnerships kind of started to develop. For us at ODC, this is a whole new service line. We literally were, we're probably not working with people until they were 17 years old and nine months, or eight, after 18. So all of a sudden, we now are working with a much younger population as well. And again, our services have totally changed now from coming into the facility to everything we do now is in the community. So we kind of, we developed this curriculum of this transition class. And I'm going to have Olivia and Ellen kind of talk some more about the specifics. But we found again, the earlier we could start getting students introduced to employment terms and those experiences, the more successful and career-ready they would be upon graduation. Sometimes if we start this early with a student, we can literally have them have three or four different job experiences in high school. When they graduate, they are career-ready, and hopefully they might already even have a job that they're going to be going directly to. So that's kind of all of a sudden how our focus changed and how we started developing these partnerships with different school districts. So if you guys want to talk a little bit about the class?
Sure. All right. All right. So Olivia has prepared a sheet that I think you all have in front of you. So, um, Sarah's already discussed on the overview and purpose. So I wanted to take a look at soft skills. Many people, I included, was unfamiliar with soft skills, the terminology. But then when it was explained to me, it was like, yeah, that, that makes total sense. So let's look at the soft skills there. So in communication, the curriculum we're looking at will talk about verbal and nonverbal communication, written communication, listening skills, eye contact with the person that you're listening to, nodding your head, that you're understanding, responding appropriately. In the category of attitude, we're looking at how do we keep a positive attitude? How do we keep our focus at work? How do we keep doing our best to do the job we're supposed to do? Also responding to guidance and correction, because if they're working with a job coach or a supervisor, something like that, that supervisor will tell them, you need to improve on this. And, and so how do you interact with your supervisor and improve your skills? We look at teamwork, teamwork in respecting each other, encouraging each other, listening to each other, and giving everyone a chance to, to be a part of the team. We're looking at networking so that you can, not only networking with the people that you know, but other people that you know, what, what does, what other jobs are in the community and making connections with other people. Networking also covers social media. What are the rules governing that we should all be aware for social, using social media? Cell phone use, and what does an employer expect from you when you're using your cellphone? Problem solving, how do you deal with praise, with criticism, with feedback? And also, what are their workplace ethics on how to follow the rules there? Professionalism covers topics of your own personal responsibilities when you're at your job, your appropriate appearance, using proper language, following the rules that each workplace has. So these are the soft schools, soft skills that we start with. Do you want me to go to jobs?
Sure.
And then we jump, we jump right into, now how do we use that to be successful in the workplace? So how do you fill out an online application? How do you fill out a paper application? How do you create a resume that, that fits the job that you're applying for? So we will be doing a lot of practicing with interviewing questions so that when they go into an interview and someone asks them, you know, what are your strengths? They won't be stumbling and thinking, well, I don't know. They'll have an answer prepared. They'll have an answer prepared of why they want that job, what skills they bring to that job, what they're, how they can help that business. We'll look at, it's, after the interview, we'll look at how do you go about accepting a job? And how do you deal with rejection? Not everyone will get that job that they want. I certainly didn't get all the jobs that I ever applied to. So how do you handle that and then move forward in a positive way to start looking for the next job? And in that, we'll be looking, as we look at the other things on this, we'll be looking at taking a field trip and looking at what clothing we're going to wear for an interview. And we're going to, we're looking at some job tours. And we're looking at, at actually trying to find, you know, jobs here in Nacusa and Wisconsin Rapids that they want to work at and would be a good fit for them.
And then our target audience, we have selected eight seniors currently with IEPs. We met as kind of a team last month, discussed why we thought each senior would be appropriate for the class. Each student will get connected with DVR if they aren't already. I will say, we have an extremely strong relationship with DVR, so it is very few that need to be referred. DVR will also help in the long run if they would like to do more job development. And again, it's that relationship that they need to have in order to pursue different avenues, especially if we, they deem a student unable to work in the community to go over to ODC. And then all students are seniors, and they will either graduate or pursue Project Search right after. And ideally, this is going along with the Career and Financial Lit class for students that are already, they've already, most of them have already taken it for a semester. This class would be second semester. But it will kind of guide them and reiterate things that they've learned from that, um, class there. Materials needed, myself and Ellen are, we are going to co-teach. Ellen is going to do the focus based on the target skills listed above. And then on Monday, she'll take care of that. Then the rest of the week, I do follow-ups, whether it's stuff to do with ACP, directly to do with the soft skills or the job-seeking skills that we're looking at. And then we just have more follow-up days to focus on all the good transition stuff. Meetings with DVR, other employers we're looking to potentially bring in too, so.
So they'll be doing the same activities that the other kids are doing with the ACPs?
They're still going to be going to ACP, doing ACP with their advisory, the Career and Financial Lit class. They're all enrolled in that class. This is just a kind of supplement and to make sure that what they're learning in that class is more applicable to what they need.
And everything that they do that will go into their ACP binders as well. So they'll have additional information in there as well.
And ACPs, again, here's the acronyms, right? At those academic career plans that Jen and Keith and Rachel have been coming and talking about.
Yes.
And as part of the verification for us to monitor the program, like I mentioned earlier in the presentation, Indicator 14, we measure the success of our students after they graduate, are they having jobs? Right now, our Indicator 14 rate is good, it has gone up every year, we're about 50%, you know? But we hope to with this, you know, like Ellen was saying, if they're able to find a job before they leave high school or have those plans and connections to DVR saying, I'm going to a technical school, how do I get connected with disability supports? All those connections will hopefully be made here. So that way, after high school, they're set, ready to go. Because some of our students right now, due to not having some of these skills trained, they may have a job leaving high school, but maintaining that job is the challenge and keeping that job. So hopefully with this, not only will they find, but also be able to maintain. Because if they have that DVR support, like Olivia was saying, they can provide job coaches, they can provide those things. So that way, they're connected, that they have those supports even after graduation already in place.
Nice.
And that's another indicator that our course is working, is that enrollment outside, to outside services, such as, you know, DVR, ADRC, whether they apply to Project Search or not. That a completion of ACP as well, making sure that that's checked off, binders complete and ready to go. Because that is a graduation requirement for them. And then just kind of building the community awareness and collaboration. We have a lot of extremely gracious community members, but we need to continue to push out there to show all the great things that we can do. And students with special needs are not always, you can't always see their special, or their needs.
Their disabilities.
Disability, yeah. So, getting out there more that way.
Do you have any questions about the new class?
Oh, I think it's good. I, um, every now and then I go to a restaurant and I see one of my old classmates working there. So I think it's really nice, you know, having this program to get those students out there beyond high school. Thank you guys for your work that you guys do for that.
I'm looking forward to that second semester class, it's like, that's going to be neat.
Yeah, I, I, we'd welcome you to stop in. It's from two to three o'clock on Mondays, second semester.
Yes, so we'll have to remember that, yeah.
So as far as employers, can the board at all help with any ideas that they might have as far as you working with employers in the area? Is there any?
Yes. Absolutely, yeah.
What, what would be the best avenue? Because I know we brainstormed it in the past.
I, I would say probably connection to you, because you'll work a lot with DVR and also with us as a service provider and make it very individualized. So I would say Olivia probably would be the best to be like, you know what? This might be a good, a good employer to approach. Our name is always really helpful when we're going into businesses. You know, it's that, it's that, it's that networking again. Hey, so-and-so recommended we come here, so-and-so knows you, I know him through the school board. That, that networking gets us in the door.
So if you have ideas, that would be great. I know Brian, we've talked about it several times.
Because I'll say too, you know, right now, we're building in Nacusa some of those opportunities. But I'll say a lot of ours, we're having to figure out transportation with DVR because Rapids has some of the opportunities right now. So we're trying to grow Nacusa area. So if you know business owners or people that we can talk to, we're always willing to set a meeting and talk.
And what businesses right now are working with us on?
Some Nacusa Courts. Nacusa Court, um, we've done Dollar General.
Piggly Wiggly.
Piggly Wiggly.
Dunk and Disability.
Dunk and Disability. We did the high, we had one at the high school and the middle school.
Yep.
With Tahoe. I think those are kind of our main ones right now.
Well, that's pretty good, yeah.
I know we've gone to Fort Edwards, to the large church that's just kind of outside of our.
CLF.
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 Yeah, so I mean, it's.
And even if you have ideas for the business tours, that would be really good too. You know, that would be helpful to us too. There's one, if those individuals are businesses that you think, you know what, maybe if you tour this, this would be a good, a good possible employer in the future. Let us know those too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm really happy with what I'm going to, it's really nice to see that the support of the agencies working together and the different groups working together. That's what it takes.
It's been a long road.
This is like, this is three years in the making.
It's been building.
Yes.
It's been, I mean, everybody's been working towards this, so this is awesome.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. And Mr. Grill, you should go on the, on the.
He's well over well. I know, I'm so on this.
James is leaving.
Yeah. Thank you so much, please have a great night.
Would I be able to get you to the band? Any questions about the sports, fall sport?
Do you want to jump ahead?
No.
Wouldn't you be here?
Why you? Yeah.
Well, if you want to jump to him and come back, I'm good.
You want to just cover the fall sport, go.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have much more than what you have in the board packet as far as, you know.
Well, ask questions though, Board members.
Yeah.
This is Mr. Han's first year in serving in this capacity.
Well, second, started his second school year, yeah.
Second school year, but this is first semester, end of it. And this is the first time I've seen something like this put together this quickly. And I am hoping that that is something that, well, if it's feasible, that it continues to happen. For that kind of feedback to get back readily, and that it's, you know, we've needed that for a long time, the consistency. And, and then, you know, to know that there is feedback from those surveys that are put out for people to understand that it's valuable to fill those out.
Yep.
And that decisions, future decisions we made using that information. So that's my only real comment, was to really appreciate the, you know, effort to get it out on a family basis and to hopefully that it's a process that we continue to see.
Yeah, and I expect it will be. Paul's doing a fantastic job as the athletic director. And, you know, we're really looking to create a system where, you know, we're hiring coaches back. I mean, obviously, they're all on a one-year contract, but coming forward with recommendations for hiring coaches quickly so that that way we provide a consistency as well. So yeah, that's, you know, it was a pretty successful fall season in many, you know, in many regards. And yeah, he does a great job. We have a new conference commissioner who is doing a fantastic job for the South Central Conference. So got a lot of really positive things moving forward.
So I noticed we're moving to a different conference.
For football only.
For football only.
So it's a football-only conference, yeah. That, um, you know, there's a lot of, you have, uh, obviously, a lot of schools with declining enrollment, enrollment that is shifting all over, some schools you have a widening gap. The SCC, our conference, the South Central Conference is a six-team conference, six-team conference.
Not sixteen, sixteen.
Six teams. And so the WIA came out with football-only conferences. And so we will be moving into what is in many ways a part of the CWC, the Central Wisconsin Large Conference. And for football only, so.
Which I just shared again in the update.
You know, and it's, and it'll continue to be monitored and moving forward. But yeah, it'll create.
That's just because of the declining enrollment that they made?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm looking at, I mean, you know, because if you're a six-team conference, you have a lot of non-conference games that you're trying to schedule. And conference commissioners schedule the conference games, but then an individual school is on their own to go out and find non-conference games. And so that creates a challenge for any AD to try and schedule and contract that many non-conference games. So, but this will, the new, that new football-only conference will certainly entail far greater transportation.
More teams in there?
Yeah.
I think we figured it out, it was hour and forty minutes, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think our shortest trip is an hour and five minutes, ten minutes, somewhere in there. So, yeah, so it will be.
Long, long day.
You know, Cheyahfton is in there.
To prevent the eight-man team too, because a lot of, like you said, they have Ole Miss dropping. They don't want to drop down with eight-man teams, so.
Yeah, that's, the eight-man teams, that's creating a whole nother ripple throughout the state as well in terms of more and more schools are going to eight-man football and, I guess eight-person football. And then that takes a team out of the conference. You know, we've got a school in our own conference that struggles with numbers for football. And, you know, football numbers are, you know, going down in, in many places.
Well, thanks for your continued work, you know, leadership and working with Paul on athletics. And be sure to thank him for the update, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, please, you know, let Paul know. I mean, he's doing a fantastic job as AD, so.
Been loving it.
Most cases.
Most cases. Okay.
You know, I don't know that anyone, any AD loves it in the spring, but.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the band game.
Yeah.
And you got, you got a little break there, Brian, on your back.
Yep. So looking at both ends of things, so we talked about a community collaboration for learning on the high school end, but I'm also working with one on the elementary end. So we have a Head Start location within Humke Elementary. So for our students with disabilities that are three years old right now, we have a phenomenal early childhood teacher. Her name is Betsy Diaz. Right now, when she has class time, it is within her own classroom. So to the peer interactions those students are having are just with other students with disabilities. Well, with Head Start, they also take three-year-olds within the building. So we want to get them interaction with other three-year-olds. So I talked with Wood County Head Start, and we talked about how could we create this opportunity for our students who are attending Humke and our students who are attending Head Start to have opportunities to socialize, do activities together? So that way, they're getting models from one another for speech, for socially-emotional, for physical. So that way they're getting models from one another for speech, for socially emotional, for physical developmental needs. All these things, so we're looking at possibly at semester also, working together to see how can we maybe get. An hour a day or something like that where they can do activities together. So the three-year-olds can interact with each other. So that way they're just learning and growing together, so that way a lot of these students also are attending school together in four K. So we're just getting that learning and exposure with one another at an earlier stage, so. But Head Start's excited for the opportunity of the collaboration, John Spring as well as working with us on this. And we're excited to see this opportunity learning grow as well.
Thank you.
So any questions about the Head Start?
No, we're excited about that, that's good. Um. Communicating with the board, Brian, um, if you wanted, we could cover the special education policies and procedures.
Well, if Lynn has something, otherwise, yeah, I don't have anything for a board update.
Okay.
Okay, I just have an update.
Go for it.
Okay, um, right now I'm in the process of, uh, closing up all of the final claims and everything for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And I feel like my, my new auditors, um, this is the audit that never ends. Because they are still emailing me and I'm a little upset about it, so. Uh, their report is due on December first, I'm feeling that a lot of the questions that they ask, are asking now, should have been asked in August. So I will have a conversation with them after this audit is done. Um, so a lot of the reports are coming due. I have the school nutrition claims that are coming due. Charter of School Report, budget has to be submitted to DPI, Medicaid Report, um, the audit report was due on twelve-one. Um, hopefully if the auditors are late with that, I will have another conversation with them and they might not be back. So I will have.
Oh, so they have to turn their report into the state?
By December first, and I will not accept a late report, so that's unacceptable. Um, but once the audit is submitted, then they'll, they'll mail it to me. And then, um, we'll have a chance to talk about it as a board meeting. My question, would you prefer that the auditor come here to talk to you about it? Since it's a new auditor, they might have a different perspective. I mean, it might be helpful to you guys, it's up to you.
I'd leave it to your discretion, Lynn.
Okay.
I, I trust you.
If you think it would be helpful to us, then yes.
Okay, so let me talk to the auditors then and see what they think then, okay?
If you want us to be mean to them, we will.
I can count on you.
I've got a mean side to me that you don't wanna see. I always tell you, you never wanna see me rage, it's ain't pretty.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, and thanks for that continued work with the audit.
Eleanor is playing the band today, so.
Yeah, I figured. She's a trooper, uh, we miss Eleanor, we're having fun. And Brian, I, I got a chance to mention earlier today what amount of work I thought, you know, that went into that special education policies and procedures. Quite a book. I thought this will be a really quick one to click on, and it wasn't so quick. It was like seventy-nine pages long, something like that. Um, a lot of work, but, yeah, and I wanna commend you on that. Um, is there anything that you'd like to bring out from that?
So the biggest thing is the reason you're approving this as a board, cause part of when we get our federal grant money for IDEA. We, as part of the assurance, we state that we have a special education handbook for policies and procedures. So a lot of this is, we are doing that so we can officially accept our IDEA grant money. But also to it outlines, a lot of it is the legal law of special education that we have to follow as a district. So what, um, I talked with Diana and talked with Neola is a lot of districts, how they do the handbook. Instead of just having it kinda on the shelf, under the policies, there will be a pull-down menu to the special education handbook. So if a community member, parent ever needs to reference the laws and see what they are. But just so you guys are aware too, like, those are the laws that I monitor along with the special education team as a district. It's a lot of laws and procedures as you see, but, uh, we do a great job as a district following a lot of those things. So I wanna commend the special education team and the admin team in helping implement all those procedures, cause it's a lot, so.
Thank you for, Brian, for your preparation. Um, motion on the floor, on the floor to approve the special education policies and procedures?
I'll push that motion, second.
And first and the second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one last note on those. Um, every July or August, whichever fits into the agenda, we'll just have to update those every year. If there's any changes, we'll just need to reapprove every July or August.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, brings us up to policy governance. Um, we have two operational expectations this month. Operational, uh, expectation number eight, asset protection.
Should I read that?
Uh, go ahead.
So annually, the board shall assure. Yeah, annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has not caused or allowed any financial activity or condition. That materially, materially deviates from the budget adopted by the board. Caused or allowed any fiscal condition that is inconsistent with achieving the board's results or meeting any operational expectation goals. Or place the long-term financial health of the district in jeopardy.
Hold that for just a second. Lynn, I wanna thank you for the work that you've done on this. I appreciate you including the, the numbers here.
Sure.
Um, and I think it also bears, um, there's a congratulations to all that contributed to a reduction in the workman's comp. Reducing that to our mod rate down to point eight-two, which is basically theoretical lowest you can go. That, you know, we had several increases across, some increases across the board. But that, that, that reduction in itself made up for it. So that we're able to renew in a, in an ever-challenging market at six percent less than what we did last year.
Right.
And so in this competitive market that we're in right now, that's a really, that's a congratulations. And I, again, that workman's comp is a controllable cost and it's really, if every single person that works for this district deserves congratulations for that.
Absolutely. I did wanna add though, I don't know if you, um, saw that we did add a new insurance policy this year. And that was for the environmental. Um, I, there's a lot, there's a lot of schools that are purchasing the environmental. And what that does is if there's mold in our school district, um, this policy will cover it. Other than if we didn't have this policy, uh, typically our liability wouldn't touch it and neither would our property. So it would be on us, so this kind of protects us. And it was a perfect year to do it because we still had a, a total overall decrease.
Yeah, and there, and I think this may have been a result, uh, we did increase our coverage on data compromise and cyber coverage as well.
Yes, we did.
Most likely as a result of our experience with the last loss of.
Yes.
Okay, understandable there.
Yeah.
Um, what you just read, can you read the first, no, flip that over. First line on that page.
For the district administrator may not allow facilities and equipment to be subject to improper use or insufficient maintenance.
Well, I had to find one bad thing on this. We had to give an ad lib boy for the reductions. I don't, I think I ever noticed this before, but under policy governance, um, the one, the one recommendation I'll have. That said that basically we, uh. Allow facilities to fall to insufficient maintenance. And I'd like to just call attention to our, our track, um, and some of, you know, those issues. And that's a, you know, something we may have overlooked in the past area, so I really can't. You know, we haven't used that policy as we expected in the past and I, I'm even questioning myself. But I, I'd like to just put that as an opportunity for improvement for this. Any other concerns, board members, um, um, strengths, weaknesses, other than the ones I've noticed?
I don't think so. I think it's as a whole with, with the track, maybe athletic director too. But it's, like you said, it, it was hidden back in the policy, so it's, it's been known for a while, so it's nothing to, nothing to take to.
Right, and I don't think it's anything too seriously, but I, I know I wanna, I just wanted to. You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, motion on the, motion on the floor to approve, uh, OE eight, master protection, as presented. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried, financial planning, OE six.
Sure, annually, the board will review the multi-year financial plan. That is related directly to the board's results, priorities and the operational expectation goals. And that avoids long-term fiscal jeopardy to the district. So this is financial planning.
And within the evidence, Lynn, Carrie, you've noted the many conversations that have taken place over the last. Six months, twelve months. And, you know, it really leads us to where we're going here, talking about our ability for a sustainable future. Um, with lowered revenues and, and. It's, the survey has gone out to our constituents in our, in our, in our district. And it's gonna be something that's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of upcoming work on. But we, you know, I, I, we gotta go back to that budget process, Lynn, thank you for your work on the budget. And getting to what, getting us to where we, where we are. And, uh, you know, it took a lot of years of tightening the belt to get us this far. And the basically tightness so far hurts right now, and, uh.
Talking about that survey, did, have we got any results back yet or is?
Not yet, so the survey, the, all survey, they're closing the window this Friday.
Okay.
Friday the twenty.
So Thursday night we have that meeting, certainly answer questions that people may have and encourage people to, to take the survey then, haven't? So.
Very good, um, financial planning, motion on the floor to approve OE six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, policy governance, um, with regards to our agenda planning, GP dash seven. Um, all board members were sent a copy, um, no, no non-conformances were noted. I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP dash seven as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Cody, would you mind reading our donations?
Yeah, all right, backpack for kids donation, sixty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, the women's mission. And then two hundred and fifty dollars from Lake Arrowhead. Thank you very much for those donors.
Thank you. At this time, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Future meetings and agenda items, we got a meeting, we have a meeting Thursday night, um, it's a board workshop. Excuse me, no. No, we have a meeting on Thursday the twenty, twenty-third. At the public library, Humke Public Library, uh, it's an informational meeting with regards to the survey.
Public library?
Humke Library, did I say that? I'm sorry.
What time did you have that done, is six?
Six P M, yep. Six to seven.
Yep.
But actually, we're asking the board to stay till seven-thirty if people have questions.
And then our board workshop in December will be December twelfth at six P M. And that's when we'll hear about the reference, the survey results. Then our regular meeting on December nineteenth. And it's gonna be, gonna be a big one, guys.
It's December seventeenth, it's wrong in the agenda.
Okay, December seventeenth, thank you, twelfth plus, no, it's December ninth then?
The twelfth is right.
The twelfth is right, okay, yep.
Seven, seventeen, please.
And it's on the board calendar too.
Yep, very good. Okay, well, um.
I'll motion to adjourn then.
All in favor, please signify by, by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. From Cody. I am, well, gentlemen, ladies, we're done, we're done. I'm going through a heart catheterization in my morning. So if I don't make it, uh, out of there tomorrow, I won't be at the meeting Thursday night. I've asked, okay?
It's a, that's procedure, but you should be.
Well, I know, but if they do work, they'll keep me for a twenty-four hour hold or forty-eight. So if I get held, I won't be at that meeting Thursday night.